System, Duke has a couple of those in the, in the western area of the state. But those are not for, not suitable for the power demands that are needed to run large motors, large pumps, over a longer period of time. They're more of a short, short-term load balance or, or quick, uh, quick solution. So, um, so we looked at all those options and came to the conclusion that we think this is a, a pretty good option to try for the city. Duke has, has provided this solution for the city of Greensboro at their, they converted the, uh, North Buffalo wastewater plant into a, basically a large pump station. So they have that solution. They have a generator there that Duke owns and operates. Also for city of Greensboro's, I believe it's Police Department and Emergency Services, they have a similar, smaller generators, but, but similar arrangement. I do have Mark Adams and Stephen Bobo with, with Duke here if there are any questions. But that's, I'll, I'll open it up if you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Bob.
Any questions from council regarding this proposal? No. Bobby, your request is to have this approved? Go ahead.
Yeah, if, if you're willing, we would like to re-ask that group include approval on the, on tomorrow night's agenda as an add-on item.
For the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Do I hear a motion from council to include that on the consent agenda?
I move.
Motion to approve for consent agenda made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us tonight. Next we'll move to item B on our agenda, sewer request for 1622 Flora Avenue. At this time, we'll recognize Todd Lambert, our city engineer. Mr. Aaron, we have a slight delay. We have staff staging outside the room, and so Todd will make his way here. Thank you, gentlemen.
Todd's making his grand interest is what he's doing.
Welcome, Todd.
Good evening, council. So this evening, we have a request from the Mass family of Graham, North Carolina LLC, which is represented by the Masood's, is requesting to extend public sewer approximately 300 feet southwest on Flora Avenue. So Flora Avenue, just to give you some over bearings, is between Webb Avenue and the Durham Street Extension area. The, the green lines you see on the map here are existing City Burlington sewer. The kind of lighter blue lines are City Burlington water lines. So the sewer in this area was installed in 1998, 99 by the county as part of a CDBG grant. While it stopped where it did, at this point, I couldn't tell you that and even fathom to guess. But the Masood's own this property, also own the, the doctor's clinics across the street. This property was being used and was on septic system that was permitted through the county. The county contacted both myself and Bob Patterson about the Masood's having a failing septic system. They had went through extensively looking for on-site sewers to do a repair area, and the county could not find anything on site that they could repair. Which basically leaves the Masood's as two options. Either they are currently, as they're doing now, pumping the septic tanks out about once a week that they've said from the owners, but that is going to be in perpetuity, or they can come and extend the public sewer down to their property. It comes before you tonight because it's in the corporate, it's outside the corporate limits, and therefore they need council approval to extend services outside the corporate limits. We have looked at the, the request. From an engineering standpoint, we, we certainly support the request to extend services outside the corporate limit in this case. Certainly always better to have something off of a failing septic system than to continue to have someone who's having to pump and haul and potentially having illicit discharges from not, not doing that on a frequent enough basis. From an engineering standpoint, it's not a super complicated line. Again, it's about 300 feet. It all gravity flows, so there, there's little nuances of just making sure they get it spaced in the right place as part of their design process. We've talked to the Masood's and kind of walked them through the steps that it would take. I think in your agenda packet, there was a detailed email, kind of walking through all the steps that they would be required along the way. But again, this is the first step to get council approval to proceed with the ability to make this extension. If council associates fit, we would ask that you consider putting this on tomorrow night's agenda. Either as consent or as new business, as, you know, you're inclined to, to allow them to extend the sewer and also to connect to it once they extend that sewer. Prior to actually making the connection, they would, we work with the planning department to complete a voluntary annexation agreement, which you would see in the future. But that's not needed right now. We're just at step one of the process. The Masood's are here if you have any questions of them, and of course, I'm here if you have any questions to staff.
Very good. Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council regarding this agenda item?
I'd like we should proceed.
Has there been any other failures in the area?
Not that we've heard. And a lot of times, the county is, the county will reach out to us from the Health Department when we do have failures and their sewer close by or readily available, then those, those are easy ones. But I have not heard, I don't think Bob has, unless you've heard any other additional ones from failing systems in this area.
Just curious if this is going to solve that one issue, or if there was a bigger issue maybe looming, so.
Not that we've heard. This, this, at this point, it's just an isolated case.
Gotcha. So, the present line, uh, what will be next in terms of this, this process if indeed the, so is everybody there looking to the, I mean, to the south here or a little north? I'm not sure. You know, the area, are they all on septic tanks?
Everything in this area along Flora is on, currently on septic. This line is such that it could be extended. Really, the crest of the hill is, is about at the halfway between these existing houses. After that, it starts, starts falling back downs towards Webb Avenue. But this line could be extended in the future if there were other houses. You had some isolated problems with some of these houses down further southwest, so to speak.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion regarding this item? Request is for consent agenda or new business for tomorrow?
I move that we add it to the July 20th city council meeting agenda.
I second that.
Motion to add this to the July 20th council agenda made by Councilmember Mayor Portem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved unanimously. Thank you, Todd.
Todd, what is the city jurisdictions in terms of what's been in, in, what's in the city? Help me out as you come down here. Where's the city boundaries?
Well, I know they turned on in this overview map. So, south of, of Webb Avenue, and then there is a parcel where this apartment complex is on Webb Avenue, is in the corporate limits. So the corporate limits now are this dark blue that's kind of south of Webb Avenue.
Okay.
In this area, we don't, we do not have any corporate limits north of Webb Avenue.
Okay. So that big facility there is not in the corporate limits?
That's right.
And they're on septic?
Uh, they are on sewer. They have a private pump station that they collect here centrally, and then they pump to our gravity sewer that's on Webb Avenue.
Okay.
So they are on, they are on a private pump system that they pump to us, but the, the large industrial facilities there are on private sewers that pumps to public sewer.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd. The Masood family, thank you for joining us this evening.
Sounds like a nightmare.
Time we'll move to item C on our agenda. I will let Todd stay up here for right-of-way abandonment request for Kirkpatrick Road.
This evening, engineering is presenting a request by Montgomery Assets LLC to permanently abandon the unopened right-of-way off of Kirkpatrick Drive, or Kirkpatrick Road, excuse me, and its opposite Sacon Drive. So let me get back in and, let me give you an overview of this area, just for context and possibly dating some of ourselves. So this is the unopened right-of-way that runs between the old Chez Restaurant and the AMRC facility that fronts on Kirkpatrick there. As you can see, there is an existing driveway that, that both of those facilities are using that comes through the unopened right-of-way, but it was never, has never been maintained as city property, never built to city standards, has always functioned. There's private driveway. So Montgomery Assets owns the four parcels north of the unopened right-of-way, and they are looking to redevelop those parcels. So they have brought to us this request to abandon this right-of-way. It helps them facilitate, facilitate some of this existing parking that's technically, we would not allow to be in the right-of-way in that configuration. It also will help them with some setbacks from right-of-way that doesn't exist. They have been in talks and discussions with AMRC, who owns the remaining parcels around the right-of-way. They have an agreement in place to execute, should the right-of-way be abandoned, to have both parties would have a private cross-access agreement so that they can continue using it just as they do now. That's not a, a public agreement. The city Bronx is not part of that agreement, but they do have that in place anticipating should this go forward. Even without that agreement, this abandonment would not offer any parcels to be restricted from having access to public right-of-way. All the road, all the other parcels currently front on public right-of-way, so this would not hinder their ability to access that public right-of-way. There is an existing public sewer line that runs through there that serves these two properties. Part of the general statutes that dictate the strict standards that you go through to abandon public right-of-way allows us to reserve an easement, just as we would any other time, over that sewer line, so it can continue to function just as it does today. To remind you of the process, again, that's, that's laid out strictly by North Carolina general statutes, what we are asking you to do tonight is to consider placing on tomorrow night's agenda an adoption of the resolution of intent to abandon and set a public hearing for the August 17th meeting. We will then have to advertise in the paper for four consecutive weeks and post signs at two locations in the right-of-way. So the adoption of the intent to resolution does nothing other than letting people know that you're, you're going to discuss it. It doesn't actually take action or move it forward, other than setting a public hearing. Mr. Porterfield is in the office, I mean, in attendance tonight for Montgomery Assets, if you have any questions of him, or if you have any questions of staff.
Very good. Council, any questions for Todd or Mr. Porterfield? Do I hear a motion to include this on tomorrow night's agenda?
Move we include it on tomorrow night's agenda.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's passed unanimously. Thank you, Todd.
Todd, can I keep it just for a minute?
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken, was that sewer was actually extended along Alamance Creek from Meven Street back up towards, into City Park this past year, was it not?
Let me get back over there and I can make sure I'm thinking of the same thing you're...
To the maintenance facility down at, where the cul-de-sac of Everbrook?
So the, the maintenance facilities behind Field Two, is that what you're asking about?
Right.
There was a sewer line that was put in, so those facilities go to a pump tank that's kind of in this area here. And then it goes from that pump tank, there's a, a private, essentially city-owned force main, that pumps to the sewer line behind the McDade Building.
Okay. Saturday morning, I got a call that the conference station there at City Park, number two ball field, is, is still on, on a septic tank.
That's correct.
Been there for years. My question is, and it was not, not a very pretty situation on Saturday in terms of what happens to a septic tank when it gets to, to a certain level. My question is, can that, can sewer then, can a sewer line actually be run to that facility there and still utilize that same infrastructure?
Yes, and actually, we had, we had met this week looking at that very issue. I think what we looked at a proposal is essentially, and I'll rough try to sketch on here, you could have a, a sewer line, a sewer lateral that went from the existing building where it leaves the building headed towards the septic tank, intercept that line, and bring it down to the pump tank. There should be little, little demand, or fighting for demand, as the, the restrooms in the facilities of the maintenance building generally are not competing for the time of day of restrooms from the ball field being used, either weekends or evenings. So, at, at very best, your, your long-term outcome would be the, the pumps running a little more, but those pumps, as their size, should handle that with no issues.
But with, with the elevation, that's, that's also...
Yeah, and it all runs downhill. I mean, it's a fairly simple install, just digging through. You've got some electric lines and probably some water service lines that you'd have to navigate under for that sewer, but otherwise, it, it all gravity flows down there.
And you might have some major landfill, possible.
There's, there's some possible, although you're coming through, you're coming through gravel there, and it's right up against the road, so, so most of that has been fairly stable from a, a settlement standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. O'Malley, if no one can help me with memory here, we've got a project, I don't know where we, where it stands, to replace that restroom building.
Yeah, well, they were...
I don't know where it stands.
CDBG, it was dropped under.
Okay. So, that's on our sort of capital needs list, and like, we redid the restroom at the amphitheater. We know this one's of the same, you know, poor quality and kind of age, so it didn't get funded, so I guess we would keep, we'll just keep churning that through.
I would just ask to get the sewer to that site anyway.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, it could almost be like a phase one, because then if you ever did replace the bathroom, the sewer would already be there, and then you're tying it straight back on to the same system.
That's right.
Can we get an estimate on the silver now? We're going to give it hard.
We'll keep pitching that through CDBG, to get that restroom replaced as well.
All right. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porterfield. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
This time, we'll move to item D on our agenda, the Belong in Burlington Neighborhood Group Program, and we'll recognize Morgan Lassiter, our Community Engagement Manager. You can hear just a moment.
I come before you tonight to give you a little update on a project that we're working on as staff, and just kind of looking to educate you guys on what we've been doing here, and feedback if you have it this evening, and of course, feedback later if you have it too. So we're, we've been, we've had a couple of community groups have come to us that are interested in organizing, that maybe didn't have the knowledge base or the skills to do that. So we've had Luisa Scholder, who's been working with us for a year, has taken this on with us and has done some good research, so we have an opportunity to think about kind of what we want to do with that now. So we've kind of coined this, the Belong in Burlington Neighborhood Groups, which is in keeping with our new brand, which was intentional. So I'll talk just a little bit about kind of what the work that's gone on. So, like I said, it was those community groups that we're looking to organize, and, you know, how do you do that, when maybe you, you, you don't know the pathway forward sometimes? And Burlington has such a robust community watch group system too, that we know that there are groups out there that are meeting, and how do we continue to support those? So I worked with the Community Resource Officer, Bobby Davis, a fair amount through this kind of research and thought too. So we did some interviews with some of those community watch captains that Officer Davis put us in touch with, and kind of heard from community what's working, what's not working, right? But we're coming off of a year of COVID, so there's a lot of things that aren't working. So we kind of were able to glean that information. We also talked to other communities that have similar programs to hear about what's working and what's not working. They ranged in size, so Durham is obviously, you know, going to be a little bit different than Burlington. So we were able to kind of think about that information and how could it be applied here? And so, again, that focusing on strengthening neighborhoods, that community pride and place-making, I mean, really providing tools, so, you know, it's, you can empower folks with knowledge when they're, when they maybe don't know where to get it. It's kind of the, the thought process that we were having throughout this process. So we began to just kind of think about what could this look like? Groups registering with us, staff introduction, so that would be a staff reach-out, a touch point. And then Luisa had done some great research on a resource kit out of another community that, like we all do in local government, were able to steal things from other communities and use their best ideas. So we do have that in our toolkit if we so choose to do it. Of course, a website that would be a resource for our community, and then regular touch points throughout the year, so what does that look like? We obviously know that staff may not have all the time in the world to attend every single meeting, but, you know, how, how do you support a community group moving forward? If it's, you know, regular email newsletters that kind of give them some insight into city function? So just kind of thinking about what's, what's reasonable for our organization, and then how can it be helpful for the, for the community? And of course, other communities do work session or council recognitions of community groups as they form. And then another idea that we were able to kind of glean to put in our thought process or toolbox as we move forward, is the idea of, like, an annual summit. So National Night Out is a summit, right? Like, that is what happens in the summer, where we really get to hear from community, be in front of them, you know, see their backyards, you know, that's its own experience. So could something like this, you know, happen in that off-season, those winter months, that kind of continues that momentum? And what is, you know, what could this look like? In other places, you see things like updates from the manager or council, there's also the opportunity for us to receive data and feedback during those processes. So those face-to-face opportunities, you oftentimes get, you know, to walk away with good knowledge. And then, of course, a guest speaker is a possibility, that community pride, and we don't, you know, our, our goal in community engagement this year with the new brand is to continue to foster community pride. So we want people to be proud that they belong in Burlington. So we're weaving that through all of our projects as much as we can. So we did that here too. So looking ahead, I think tonight, I'm just giving you a brief overview of kind of where the thoughts are. We're working, of course, with the manager's office, with economic development, and then our department, to kind of think through these ideas and think about what this could look like for our community. So thankful to be able to give you guys an update, and happy to hear any feedback or thoughts that you have this evening, or of course, following too.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah.
Any questions?
So what, what are you looking at from a timeline?
Well, we've talked through a couple different timelines, and like I said, with National Night being in August, I think we were even thinking like a, you know, offsetting of that January or February. But, I mean, realistically, you know, we've got community connection. We, we know the communities that the police department has built, so we've got a good base there to kind of think about that. You know, their program's specifically about crime prevention and education. We're viewing this as maybe a seg, you know, a little added bonus to that too, so you get a little more information maybe on, you know, some code enforcement efforts. We've had code enforcement come out and speak to Morgantown, who's the community group that is really interested in forming right now.
Can I throw out April instead of January or February? Because it seems to me that people rather gather outside, and some of these communities aren't going to have indoor facilities that would house the number of people at one, at one time.
For the summit? Yeah, I think, and we can pivot with this, the, the summit idea was maybe just the community leaders from each community coming together, but that idea of gathering in community again is, I mean, that is powerful, I think, to do that.
It's an idea.
Yeah. It works for National Night Out.
Yep.
We're all looking forward to the end of August.
Ice cream?
Yeah. One of the things in the, in the Morgantown, we're currently working with the Morgantown group, we've had two meetings at a church there, and after, after the first meeting, what came, became clear is that they were interested in the police, and the police were able to give them the standard sort of community watch messages, but they quickly, quickly realized, well, they also needed to hear from codes enforcement. So meeting two, we brought our codes enforcement staff, and they got some really, really good dialogue with them, both Chris Marlin, who leads that group, and then the officer that would be, that's assigned to that area, and the dialogue was really good. Ms. Hikes was there, and he actually kind of took over the meeting, which worked out really nicely in terms of communicating with the neighbors. So we realized it's more than just community watch, although that's, police is a part of it. And then they, they asked questions as well. Actually, Emily Crowley, who heads up Recreation Division, that has all the youth programs, attended as well based on the first meeting, and was able to tell them about things kids can do in the summer, and where were their camps, where their, where does the neighborhood play, park and play, where does it go, and that sort of thing. So we realized people want to talk more about than just police. But police was, again, the first thing that got them there, but then what else?
So as you start developing the, the platform for this and moving forward, I mean, do you see this as something that, we think of a, we think of a organized community group now, because there's several that we know of, and they're very engaged throughout the year with various things, but then there's other areas that could utilize this type of program, like, for instance, where there's an apartment, group of apartment complexes that may be new and have a lot of newer residents in there. Then you've got some HOAs that are very strong within their own organization that may not come at it from a city standpoint or governmental standpoint, but would like the opportunity or the resource. Are we planning on reaching out to those and kind of making it a comprehensive plan?
I believe so. I believe it's an all-call, and it's not, the lines are squiggly around how you define a community group, so I think that it, yeah, it can be anyone. Yeah.
Yeah, condos developments, or condo groups especially, those people are very tight.
Does this dovetail into the kind of Belong in Burlington program that had been going on here in City Hall?
Yeah.
To feed people and to kind of helping develop that neighborhood?
Yeah, I think, I think all of that feeds together, right? The new resident versus the existing neighborhood groups, yes. Yeah.
Very good.
I like this as the point of entry, because that is the mystery for people. They don't necessarily think right off to call the police department to form a neighborhood group, but they would look for, to us to do that in city administration. So I think that it's a great idea. It's a way to get in.
Good.
What I've seen, to pick up on the comments y'all made, is some, some places have even taken a garden club. You know, if there were a few people in the neighborhood who were organizing, planting around the sign, you know, at the entrance to the apartment or the neighborhood, that becomes your nucleus to get started, and then they'll get you plugged into other things, because there's gardening, those particular people, but they'll connect you with other neighbors who may be interested in other things.
Yep.
So it's, we'll get there any, any, in a various number of ways. Some have formal HOAs that are already structured and ready to go, and then some may have, they don't have covenants, but they have kind of an informal, you know, kind of HOA people in the neighborhood who just kind of take care of stuff if something needs to be dealt with. And so I think we envision something that we're, all of those can, you know, you can get their five or six different paths to get plugged in somehow.
But the city can buy, provide an overall kind of resource and structure to coalesce those folks and, and help them be guided on that sense of community.
That's good.
As we all know, I mean, the stronger each community is, the stronger we are as a overall city, so.
Other council comments or feedback? Appreciate it, Morgan.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes our regular agenda items tonight. Manager, anything else you wanted to add?
The only thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, is in their new role, I think formally in this room, when Eric Kearns is here, is our interim chief of police, so I think it's the first time he's been present in this room for that, in that particular function. So, I want to welcome Eric, and then Cheryl Brown is with us, and Cheryl, as you all know, is serving as our interim assistant city manager in the Administrative Services Group, so this will be her first council meeting in that role, so welcome to both of them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Any council comments this evening?
It's good to be back in here, don't you think, after how many months now? Eighteen?
Been a while.
Long time. Good to be back.
Any other council comments? Otherwise, we will adjourn for the evening, and we'll see everyone 7:00 PM tomorrow night. Thank you.